Thank you all for coming to our work session. We'll have a quick word prayer and we'll get started. Let's pray. Father, we come to you as a group of believers seeking your wisdom. Give us wisdom and we put together the upcoming agenda for the next upcoming meeting. Father, just help us to grow. I ask you to bless our county, bless our state, bless our country in Jesus' name. Amen. We have several folks who've asked to come and speak. We have Hartz with Ms. Robbie Mobley and Ms. Robinson here. So you want to begin? We'll kick this off.
Kick it off.
Kick it, Bill.
Well, we appreciate you guys allowing us to speak. I pass things out. I miss you too. This is our community report from last year. So it's got our number, Janet, and Amy, and just a few of them. Just so you see how the support that you guys give has affected your constituents and our county as a whole. For example, on page three, you'll see the emergency.
I get your code.
You will. Thank you, Judge.
Sorry. We won't be able to see.
Short people. I know. You'll see, our budget is right at $400,000 annual basis. I don't know if you guys knew that or not. We have increased dramatically over the last couple of years since COVID especially. Not only have donations coming in, grants that we've been affording, and also small business services that we've been seeing. So our budget, like I said, is a little over $40,000. For every dollar that comes in, eighty-seven cents of it goes right back out in some way, shape, or form in one of our programs. And just kind of a breakdown of that funding. Emergency financial assistance that we provided during the year was $156,446. That's... Yes, sir.
Can you breath that out?
You sure can. Cindy and I were just talking. I should have brought our financials and email you over coffee at our party. But yes, I will email it to you guys.
Did you just submit the link?
Yes, definitely will. So that you can see exactly where the monies are going. So $156,000, well, over that went for rent and utilities for the most part of our clients. The clothing closet, when we get donations that come in, not monetary, but all of the material donations, clothing, food, meats, et cetera, that comes into our household items. We gave out another $97,000 worth of value to that. Our helping kids provided $17,778 in kids in classes. That's where we have the principals and the counselors, how they specifically ask for certain children that have needs, different items that we provide. In addition to that, for the foster families, we gave a little over $10,000 strictly for foster parents and the kids, and also not necessarily those that are in the system that are staying with a safety resource, which may be a family member or someone close to the family, even though they're out of the foster system. So that's a little over $10,000 there. And any one of our programs, the cancer program, our short program, et cetera, we spend anywhere from $20,000 to $25,000 per program in addition to that. So that kind of gives you an idea of where the monies are going up front. Now, if you look across, of course, you all know that we are expanding. We are growing. And our building is almost ready. We are so excited, we can't wait. That three-bedroom house that we're in in Heffron, we outgrew a couple of years ago. We were bursting at the seams. So our new building that was given to us by the Baptist Association, we had to do a complete job and remodel, and it's been the building that keeps getting for the last year and a half. We didn't expect it to take this long, but it did. You know, funding, we've got several grants, Husa Valley, Alabama Power, and then some individuals that specifically wanted to donate earmarked to that building. We haven't had to do a capital campaign, but we did have to do it in two phases. So we've got the first floor is phase one, and the second floor will be phase two. The first floor is almost complete. They are putting the ceiling in today. They started our grid system, and then we've got the flooring coming in, and then we get to move now. So hopefully, within the next two or three weeks, we'll be downtown on Main Street. With that, the opening, the first phase, we will have a client intake and assessment area. We've got the homeless showers. We cater to about 35 to 38 homeless individuals already. So we have homeless showers with supplies, toiletries, and things that they need, a clothing closet, so when they're coming in to get their showers, I'll also be able to get a clean set of clothes. Like I said, the toiletries, shampoo, mouthwash, toothpaste, whatever it is that they need, and just a nice, quiet, safe place for them to rest. We've had some of the guys from the Penn-Hevy Trail that are traveling through the community that are, you know, will also be utilizing that. So it's just a safe place for them to come and relax while they're traveling through the county. We are looking at on that next page, the upcoming resources. Like I said, the hot showers for the homeless. We have a reentry program. We spoke to Don and his fellows, a couple of the trustees last week. We spoke into the police chiefs and got their input into what they're actually seeing that's coming into the county. We're in the middle of a community needs assessment, so we wanted to know where the gaps in the resources lie. And we're getting a better grasp on that. Hartz has always been crisis-based. You need a bill paid, you need something immediately. You have sometimes a hardship and they come to us. They need clothing, they need food, they come to us. We are wanting to take more of a family focus, more of a preventative measure to helping what's going on, right, and the things that we see in the community. So our needs assessment is showing us not only the gaps, but maybe those underlying issues that are really the cause. For the last several years, we've just been slapping Band-Aids on the problem and not really helping our clients succeed or become. You know, Hartz is an acronym for helping every area resident to succeed. And so we're not really getting them past that hardship or past that crisis that they're in. So with our new building, we'll be able to give them more resources, being able to become self-reliant and self-sufficient and take care of themselves and their family. When phase two is complete, we will have council resources, we'll have workforce development and the process of getting those grants in line. We will have focus groups. We have some certified, licensed counselors that are willing to volunteer their time to help deal with our clients and use to talk them through something as easy as doing a budget and planning so they won't have to come month after month and seeking that additional help, they'll be able to, you know, take care of themselves and their family. That's where our focus is, is getting them the resources that they need to be able to do that. So we've got a lot of things in the works, a lot of things that hopefully before long we'll be able to offer the community. Again, with our needs assessment, we're seeing a lot of needs that are out there that we hadn't really, some of them we hadn't really thought of in the past, like the reentry program. And talking to these guys coming out of incarceration, they don't have a plan. They put a lot of manual labor into our new building, so we've kind of built a little bit of a relationship there with them. And so we wanted to pick their brains, and Sheriff was trying to let us do that. And you know, some issues that they're a little nervous about when they get out is they don't have a GED, they don't have a high school education, they don't have a support group, they don't have families. Some of them are not even from around here, and they don't know what they're going to do. And we see some now that when they do get out, all they have is shirts on their back. What's going to keep them from going back into that life that put them there in the first place? So we're hoping to be able to provide more guidance and more resources for them to succeed in their life when they do get out. And that's just one program that we're looking at. With the foster kids, you know, having a voice with them, we're going to start a Hakasa program here in the community where we are advocates. We met with Melody and Jonathan, the juvenile probation officer, and they shared their insight on what they're seeing. Parenting skills is a big issue, so we will be offering parenting classes and co-parenting especially. We've met with the Board of Education and all the counselors and the principals, and they've shared with us what they are seeing and the problems that they're having to deal with on a daily basis. And we know, we're not naive, we know we can't help everybody. But if we can help that one or that one family and the tripling effect that happens from there, you know, we just need to get this focus turned back onto that family unit because our community is only as strong as our families. And so if we can help one, and then they help one, and then they help one, and then it'll just be a dominant effect, then hopefully it will make our county that much stronger dealing with the poor and then bringing it out. Thank you for your support. Thank you for the way that you've always been there for us. We so appreciate you guys. The power bills and our paying our utilities for the Heffron office has been a godsend. We couldn't do what we do without you, and we just wanted to really take time and say thank you. Yes, sir.
Do you have a walk-in cooler yet?
No, sir.
Have you got the design and the bill and you're in now for a walk-in cooler?
Yes, sir, we do.
Because I was looking at them, you know, if you go to used, now it's cool, you wind up, that stuff you wind up having to figure out what to do with it, because they got to have new stuff. But I think a walk-in cooler would be good. So you have a place in the building now to put one?
Yeah, I got started on that and went off on a rabbit trail, I'm sorry. On the left-hand side will be our homeless area, on the right-hand side is our food ministry. Still, we have a...
How many cooler are you talking?
This is your expertise on that side. That one here is...
Because in Alabama, you know, the one down in Oxford, that's somewhere right off the I-20, back in that neighborhood over behind the coat. Well, I noticed we went down, because back in COVID and everything, we was hanging out a lot of food, you remember?
Yes, sir.
And we'd go down and pick it up. What I really loved is when they would get donations in, you remember, I think I had to come get y'all because I had a truckload of food, we had to get rid of it then.
You did.
But I'd love to work with y'all about that cooler.
Okay, we would love that, yes, sir.
I'll take math specifics. We had looked at them and had measured them all, and I apologize, that is just left in my brain of what...
Well, it's been on my mind for a while, so I'll get with y'all, and we'll see what we can do.
The ground for our food is like a 20 by 40, I think, area, no, 20 by 30 area on the side downstairs. And we did have the electrician go ahead and do the electrical for it because we knew that was going to be in the works for what's coming up, so.
I had one at one time, but it was for flowers. But I would think, but then after I got rid of it, the guy said, "All you got to do is change out the compressor." I should have known that myself. But I'd love to work with y'all on getting that walk-in cooler.
Yes, sir.
That would be, as you know, did you go down and let me pick up any of that?
We did.
It's just unreal, I mean, because that really makes, that's a game changer.
We do thousands and thousands of pounds of food in a year. There's that number that there's someplace that I can't think of it, but...
Well, somebody donated turkeys or hams at the end of the year to have a place, because don't you remember how we tied that, put it in the cooler, and I was like, geez, surprise, this is...
We take it home with us, it goes in our freezers and our refrigerators until time does...
So let me ask you this, would it be, you probably wouldn't hold on to, would it be better than just a refrigerator or a freezer?
Freezer.
Okay.
A freezer. Now, we do get things like cheese and stuff, but everything that can be...
Which you can use on your other stuff, right?
Can be frozen, yes, sir.
Because we come out with hams and third double, we're dealing with, and then eggs, okay, I'll get with y'all on that.
And we do have lots of local egg raisers, chicken raisers, that bring us fresh eggs.
Oh.
So, and we don't put those in the cooler unless they have.
As long as you don't put them in, because they're a fresh age of layers. I'm sorry, I see you eyeballing them. Look them up.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Maybe you don't.
Thank you, guys.
Any questions?
All right.
So one question, so the one in Rammer still stays in Rammer, right?
It's still staying in Rammer, yes, sir. It's not going anywhere.
Okay.
So we have Mr. Vic Pascal, Ms. Fuller invited him to come this evening. Ms. Fuller, thank you for getting Vic to come, and I put a card out for everybody and get some pity bose.
I was just pointing that that's what Terry wanted, was for us to look into this set machine, so I thought it was easier for him to talk to you than it was for me because I don't do this job.
Hey, what are y'all leaving for?
Y'all gonna miss the drawing.
Y'all missing the drawing.
Is it for a freezer?
Is it for a honey? We'll talk about it.
Joyce asked me about this stuff, and so what I put together, it's a cheat sheet, right? I'll tell you, you're just a chairman, right?
They like it already.
Pity bose, a lot of folks take pity bose, take the copies, take the fax, and take photos of your meter, okay? Pity bose is basically, we handle mailing, is what we do. Whether you look at traditional, whether you look at digital, pity bose handles this. And what I have put together here, I'm doing a very, very quick job of covering everything here, because I've been doing this for over 35 years, and a little bit I'll talk about. If you look at that first page, it says a bundle of ball of twine hanging on the paper. That's the way most people's communications handle. Matter of fact, it's the way the communication between me and my wife's handled half the time. Takes a long time to get it fixed up, but when you start looking at business communication, you're handling things like that, it makes things very difficult. Makes it hard to communicate, makes it hard to get anything done. But when you start looking at what's going on at your courthouse and in all the departments within the courthouse, you start looking and saying, hey, we've got to control this, we've got to make it certain of what's coming in, what's going on, what's going out, and then we've got to control the cost of how everything is handled. And most people said, well, I know exactly how we're going to handle this, but most people just don't understand what they've done. And so we try to help with all that. And if you start looking at this thing, you have a lot of things that you don't have the visibility to, things just aren't quite complete, you start trying to look at what can you do, you start trying to put things together, hodgepodge, and now you've got a bigger guess of what you started with. Because you start looking at things, saying, hey, what can I do to control everything? So, well, we're really not here, so my postage meter, fine, you'll get to that point eventually. So it's not just mailing and shipping and things more, because so many things have been changing in the atmosphere just from the postal service themselves. So what we look at is we put together in the background behind everything analytics of how you can see everything that takes place, from every letter to every package to every parcel. And we also take a look at shipping, because people said, Vic, we're talking about mailing. Well, we are, but we're not. Postal service changed things a few years ago, but pretty much anything over, if it's a letter, it's a letter, if it's a flat, it's a flat, if it's a package, it's a package. Most people don't know the difference between the three. They think because I put it in the number 10 envelope, it's a letter. It's not, okay? I've seen people put things in a number 10 envelope that is a package because they made it too thick. Postal office changes in 2008, and again, most people don't understand that. They walk out of postal service, I don't know why they call that a package, because they're going to be held separate for it, and they walk out, talking to themselves all the way to the car, and they forget about it, and then they go back and do what they were doing. But if you start looking at it, that's why things change. Other people get so many things in, they don't know what to do with, so they make up a whole lot of cool little clipboards, keep up with everything, and then all of a sudden, somebody says, what happened to this? I don't know, I have to go look. And they go back across reference, clipboards, okay? Very, not very accurate, not very, you know, useful, using the time. Then we start looking, how can we distribute things back out? How do you take care of that? All these things can be controlled under what pity bose does. And if you start looking at the mailing, the mailing will really start focusing in on things. If you look at the mailing concepts of what we're talking about, what we can do for Cleveland County. The benefits of meter, you're making, first you want to look at, you're watching about businesses, you consider using a postage meter. You know, there's the obvious, well, everybody does, kind of, but you're not going to do anything just because everybody else is doing it, that's pretty ludicrous. So you want some type of variable, concrete ways we can do things. Well, postage meters save money for your business, okay? Y'all anybody keep stamps at your house? Y'all got stamps, keep a lot up over there? So you've got a letter coming out, and you've got to look at this, if this is a letter going out, come in. One stamp, two, put two on there, Ryan, make sure it goes up good. All right, let's find out. The worst thing you can do is overspend on mail. That's the worst you could do, or the best, I guess you could do. Because the worst thing you could do is not put enough on here. Now, it's either going to get delivered to its recipient postage dude, or what you thought was getting there on time is not, now it's going to come back to you for postage dude, so that you can turn around and recreate this and turn around and ship it again or mail it again. So now it costs you triple the postage because you sent it once, not enough, now you've got to send it again. Postal service gets where they want to accept it, the stamps are already on it, so now if you throw this one away, create another, and put two stamps on it this time, because one stamp wasn't enough, you found that out the hard way. So now you, not only is your mail delivered late again, hope it's not a credit card payment, that just cost you 72 bucks, just for the heck of it, but anyway, you come back to it now, it costs you 3 cents to get that thing done, still costs you more than it should have. The other thing is it saves time for your business. It don't take hardly any time to throw something up on scale, run it through the mail machine, boom, 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 it's done, okay? You start looking, it can promote business, because you can actually put little slogans and things like that all over your postage machine, all over your letters. You don't have to go out and buy return mail, or your envelope, you know, with each department's name on it. Postage meter nowadays can actually print that on there. You know, the only time that you really got to worry about is when it's on the top left-hand side, is when somebody says, but you have to forgive what I'm about to say, elected officials are the world's worst, okay? Top left, they got to have their name all over it, and it's got to be cursive, or it's got to be color, it's got to be... All the post office wants to know is where do I send this thing back to if the people you're mailing it to, don't you think? That's all they do with grabouts. All right, our mail machines, you can actually key it in, say it by department, and so now it can print in the top seven eighths of an inch of an envelope, it can print who it was, who it came from, where it goes, to and how it goes. And so now if I say I'm mailing it from the Department of Revenue, boom, how about that? It's going to put their parent address on it, it's going to charge that department for the postage that's being used and move forward. If it's the sheriff's, it can do the exact same thing. You know, if it's probate, it can do the same thing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So now we can know exactly who spent what, how much of what was spent, and then how do we get it there the next best way? Because the other thing is what a lot of things has happened recently on there, I think, is that... But anyway, it just gives you that edge so for now, you can control what you're doing, how you're doing it, and nobody's having to come back out and say, well, what's the minimum quantity? Well, minimum quantity's 5,000. How many departments you got? Is everybody going to buy a minimal quantity of 5,000 with raised leather, you know, photography on this thing? That costs half the nose to get that stuff printed. And then all of a sudden, somebody says, well, we have a new A911s, we're going to change your address, so what you going to do with that other zip? Well, that's fire start. Merry Christmas. But if you look at some stuff, and I found another page, it's been a long time since I really spoke or discussed about it. You get postage meters back in the early 90s, you know, when I came to work with you, they always talked, hey, you got to sell mail postage meter. You don't talk to the big group, you don't talk about the big stuff I generally sell, you got to sell postage meter, a little bigger thing, sitting on here on the side of the desk. But if you had 10 benefits of metered mail, and this is what I sold, this is all I sold. The first thing is you look at the postal meters, convenient. And a lot of times, when I talk to a lot of government agencies, all you got is convenience. If you really boil it down, it's more than convenience, but what you have is convenience, but it saves you money by being convenient. But the other thing is you eliminate trips to the postal service. If you stop and say, how many times you run back and forth to the postal service, start figuring the time, look at the cost effectiveness of the time. Think about this, if I'm sending employees to the post office to pick up mail, to deliver mail, to see how much this is going to cost for me to send mail, every time you send employee there, you're also taking on liabilities as a company or as a business entity or as a government entity. Yes, you hold 100% of the liability sending them out, the new business, working business hours, or else you could lose a whole lot without it. You have savings. We joked about the extra stamp, right? We always talk about extra stamps, and we all deal with it, even I deal with it, I work with pity bose. Because at home, what am I supposed to do to get a whole, whole bunch of dead gum stamps, slap them together? I can get the online stuff for pity, I mean, we got online postage, we invented the dead gum online postage, most of you don't know that either, but I can get it, I just don't want to do it. Because I'm already, I sell it all the time, I deal with it all the time, it's the last thing I want to think about all the personal time. But if you start looking at cost accounting, exactly who spends the money? You know, because it's amazing to me sometimes, departments or agencies or whomever will contact me, says, Vic, we do mail machines, what, we don't need departmentally county? You know, you spend $10,000 a month in postage, and you don't want who spends it? You don't really care how they spend it? If you've got that much money, I'll take some of it, let me just put my name down, all right? You might want to start looking at that a little closer, because if you find out who's spending it, you can also find out who's wasting it. Because if you're using stamps, I can already tell you, this is the biggest thing I've ever seen that actually grows legs, walks away, and nobody gives a crap about it, which is so people don't want to add. You start looking at, yes?
Like a forever, so if you buy postage from you?
Yes, you'll buy it from me, but okay.
Well, whoever.
Yes.
But on the postage, is there, like, at the beginning of the year, a lot of times, I know in our departments, they're buying the forever stamp. What is, so does your price go up and down?
The price is going to go up based on what the postal service deems to go up on. However, pity bose helps with legislation, helps with postal service, because if you use a postage meter, you're already getting a discount with how much you're sending your mail out for. You're automatically going to get 3 cents on each mail piece back already, so I'll make them come off the cost of price. It's going to go up again every time you go through it, but what happens with stamps is that if I've got a roll of stamps sitting here, they're all forever stamps, what, 67, 68 cents now? Well, the first ounce of metered mail is 65 cents, okay? So if it goes up again, well, yep, it's going to go up again, because whatever that base level's going to go up. The biggest difference which you get with a postage meter is independent studies will tell you that 20% of all mail that's processed using a postage meter, that guarantee you 100% of the time, you're going to save about 20% of your postage costs because you're no longer going to be doubling up on stamps. You're not going to have to keep multiple different levels of stamps.
I understand.
But you're going to get an increase in cost in postal services.
Like at the courthouse, we have two or three different departments, right? So you're saying that you could log on to that postage machine with an accounting number? So if somebody goes in there, here's this machine, we use something similar to this in Atlanta, you go in with that accounting number, just like at copy machines, does the same thing.
Right.
You put your code in, and that department will be billed for that, because if not, if you had, so I guess that machine, you charge for each machine depending on where it is, correct? Like, we need one at the courthouse, one at the mountain center, and one at the jail.
We could, yes.
But is it cost worthy, just go ahead and stick them in each department? Or is it better to have a standard, like at the courthouse, where you've got three departments down there or four?
If customers ask me, Vic, what do you suggest? It's always better for a consolidated mail center than there is for, you know, digital. Because if I've got one here, and I've got one at the sheriff's office, and I've got one at the courthouse, even one at the courthouse is going to be servicing multiple departments, the one here is going to be serviced here, the one's going to be serviced sheriff's department, sheriff's...
Sheriff's department.
When you start looking, when I start evaluating how much postage they really do, and I start going back through, I'm going to come back out with a quote-unquote professional suggestion. Well, my suggestion is going to be, well, this is based off of this amount of usage, you're going to need this kind of machine, this. I mean, because we've got machines that start here and go all the way up to here.
We need it here.
Right, and no, we all want it here too, that's what I always say. But if everyone needs one here, if we pull them all together, we need one here, okay? So it can be most efficiently used, because it might be the sheriff's office, their biggest usage is, we got files we mail out, and we've got inmate paperwork that's got to be filed back over here with somebody else, and we've got a few little things, a few things here and there that's got to be certified. Well, revenue, the only thing they got out is they got, you know, tax notices, things of that nature, face sent out, any of your forms, things of that nature. Probate's got certain files, got to send out family paperwork, state information, that's a whole bunch of heavy stuff that goes on with this. Each one of them has a different type of mails going out.[1695.54] Each one has a different style mail system that's really designed to do that type of mailing. You got another department like here at the mountain center, they probably need something to sit right, sit about right here, if it's a mail machine, telling me how much it is, it might.
Not enough to check.
You don't even need nothing, all you need's a computer, load the software on it, let it send it out.
My main replacement was, is, so if we had one set up, so the, uh, so it would work off of a, a, of a app of a computer? No matter where it is, it's all gonna be billed by accountant number, so the sheriff would have just something to print, whatever they're gonna print? Or does it actually put it on the parcel?
Both, I mean, we got all styles. Um, my initial proposal to y'all was a largest, not a largest, but a large machine, a mid-range, heavy volume machine that would sit at the post, uh, sit over here at the courthouse. Cause the bulk of your mail from any county, I don't care which county it is, I don't care if it's Jefferson, or if it's Flack.
Right.
Okay? Most of your mail's gonna come from either revenue, probate, that's generally where everything stops, right there. Everything after that is down here, unless your school board comes in through, through the county, but most of the time they don't. Cause there's laws that says how that has to operate. Sheriff has some, but not that much, they've got just enough to be a pain in the rear. Uh, but all the other departments are normally either, I'm sorry guys.
You can hurt his feelings.
Well, I'm sorry, it may hurt his feelings. It happens, I mean, you got enough postage where you need something to do postage with, but dead gum, you don't really need your own machine.
Yes.
Because half the time, those guys are back and forth at the courthouse every dead gum day. Why not drop them off at the courthouse?
Go on through, uh, I, I understand.
Yeah.
But I guess what we would be looking at is evaluation of what we need. So is there a charge for you to give us evaluation of what we need?
I kinda already gave you baby evaluation, if anybody says something to me differently, I might make some changes. But most of, most of what I've looked at for what y'all wanna do, and. Put this back in here, go ahead and, and two, two minutes. Alright, if you go down to the next page, your mailing expenses, I think it's on page number thirteen or fifteen? Here's what I've looked at, I was given this information. And this is incomplete, but it's the highest usage from here in your county. And this is what was given to me, not to say that it's accurate, it was given to me. Okay? Revenue spent about seven thousand dollars in postage last year. Probate spent about seven thousand dollars postage last year. Administration spent about thirty-five hundred. Are we certain? How do we know? Show me your records. Anybody got any records? Didn't think so. Okay? But that's what I was told. Now, I told you I've been in it about thirty-five years, I can tell you historical about what a county does in this state anyway. Historical meter information for a county, you spend right now, the average is about a dollar per piece of mail that runs out of the county. On average. Cause you got heavy stuff, you got regular mail stuff, you got certified stuff, you got non-certified stuff. There is nothing I can do about the legislative process of what happens over here with county clerks. Most of their mail's gonna be charged straight back to the state anyway, so don't worry about them. As far as the county spends on county dollars. That's what you, average, average, uh, the per average is twenty percent of your mail is, is first-class priority, or packages. Now, with the changes of postal service two years ago, there's a certain way you can process that and get anywhere from eighteen to eighty percent discount on that postage, as long as you process it properly. You run it through a computer program that we actually give you, with every mail machine that we place. You run it through, type in the name, address, and it spits out either a four-by-six label, which I don't suggest you do in that. You spin it on the left brick for copy paper, fold it half, put it into a sleeve, it comes out looking like this that you put on a box. Alright, eighteen to eighty percent discount. And plus you get free tracking, you get free shipping notification, you know when it was delivered, you know when it was shipped, the whole nine yards. Especially, who handles those tags in this county? Is it probate, is it revenue?
Probate.
Probate handles it, alright. Cause sometimes probate handles it, sometimes revenue handles it, every county's different. But if you're sending out a tag, a tag is not for, it's first-class mail piece, but you can't send it out as a letter, because it's too stiff, it becomes a parcel automatically. When it becomes a parcel, I can send special parcel rates, it takes that rate from some six dollars per one tag, takes you down two dollars forty-five cents. I don't wanna do that, that saves too much money. Hey, but. And if you know who you're mailing out today, I can actually create that list and import it into the software we give you. And all you have to do is keep hitting enter, and they'll spit labels out, and you slap them on and go with that three-dollar-per-piece savings. Nice concept. It ain't gonna pay for your system, if you're not gonna lie all the time. But if you look at electronic scale usage with the postage meter, most people save at least twenty percent, because it takes care of the inaccuracies of the individual using it. Not to mention, we cut the legs off the stamps that continue to grow that walk away. Cause nobody's ever stolen a stamp. It's just a stamp. I'll be brief, it's a stamp. I just need a stamp. I'm not stealing from the county, it's just a stamp. That's what people, I've heard it said. People look at me, it says stamp. See? You know, and, and that's what happens. They look at it as just a stamp, because it's a roll, it's sitting there, it's to be taken, it's nothing different than taking the pen. This is a county pen? I like the pen. And I'll take off with the pen, it's a county pen. And she's not gonna get one, and we're not gonna about it, she's gonna let me have it. Sir?
What's a break-even point?
Well, everybody's got a break-even point, I mean, I, I've kinda got a play with what I look at. I look at volume, I look at types of mail, I look at those type of things when I look at it. A long time ago, I used to have a totally different viewpoint of when I'm looking at this. My thing keeps going to sleep on me, I apologize.
Right, if we, if we send out, like what you get, man, you get seventeen thousand.
Yep.
If we send that seventeen thousand pieces of mail.
Yep.
Then at what point are we starting to save money?
Well, saving money, I like the way you think, cause you think like I do, I'm a numbers guy, that's one of my majors, from college years ago. Looking at your extrapolation from what you did, knowing when I know mail's created from, you're down around seventeen thousand pieces. Alright, you automatically get three cents per piece savings. You automatically know that you had this many first-class packages, so you're somewhere down around a six dollar per average piece on those pieces. I can save a total of around fifty-seven seventy-five per year, just knowing what y'all do. And I have probably about ninety-nine-five percent confidence rating in exactly what I'm saying about what y'all are doing here, just the picture of counting it.
But then we got machine, then we got the.
Bingo, you're, you're following me a hundred percent.
Yeah.
If you look at this, into what, the next page over, this machine's gonna save you a lot of time processing. I don't know what y'all value your time for, I don't know what I value mine for, but you save time, and you save effort, you save frustration. And you save the lack of the information that you have to try to figure out what the crap's supposed to be going on with the machine actually does it for you, it does your own thinking. Based on what I have seen, this is my overview right now of what I'm looking at. You're gonna save about four-hundred-and-one dollars a month, just from what I've been given. The operating expenses of this machine are about four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars a month in lease, plus solution expenses for, you know, what's my cost of expense for the, uh, materials it takes to run it, the ink, the water, the tape. Tape's only gonna be used for anything greater than five-eighths of an inch thick. The little blue water we call Easy Seal, you want that, you know, to seal your envelopes. So why don't we just use regular tap, cause it's got fog built all up in it, and it starts stinking after while, and it gets moldy. I highly suggest, cause we use little water pumps and a little bit of thin tubes that runs it through, so, okay, if you don't want to, just call service more often. But as far as the ink is less than one cent per piece of this right now.
So for leasing it, and you say service, is it, is it camera expense to work on the machine?
No.
Okay, so the machine will be in working order?
Yeah, if it, if it's not in working order, it's up, you call us, tell us, hey, come fix it.
We do that.
Alright, but as far as supplies, customer's responsible for supplies and postage.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Outside of that, the lease under the state contract program says it's gonna cover you for maintenance, it's gonna cover you for the operation of the system on a regular basis.
And the lease is month-to-month.
No, it's state contract, what we do for state contract, we use NASPA, National Association State Criminal Officers Contract. State utilizes that, by state law, you can only spend money in the current fiscal funding period. However, you have an intention of how long do you wish to lease this product? I priced this out under a sixty-month program, that's gonna give you the lease expense. However, you can't obligate yourself outside of the current fiscal funding period, but you have an intention of going sixty months with this. So every fiscal funding period, you're actually putting in for more money each fiscal funding period to let lease comes to its termination. At that point in time, you return the equipment to us, get brand-new equipment, whatever the lease rate is, you keep rolling forward. It's kinda like, people say, well, I, I wanna buy this, I say, congratulations, you're going on a piece of junk when it's done. It's not made to be something that you, you're not trying to earn interest off of it or anything like that. This thing is out here for you to use. I mean, cause my belief with what you're doing and how you're doing it, this is a size machine that should fit into what you're looking at. You're not looking at our biggest system, you're looking at something mid-range, and it's on the lowest end of our mid-range. But it gives a piece of equipment that what I refer to as about as idiot-proofed as I can figure out. I put a three.
So what's the lease price of this stamp yet?
Uh, that's one of, go to the, the four, I always say, the four-thirty-eight eighty-eight, if you look the very last page of that, that document.
I'm there.
I mean, I'm on the very last page.
But you're basically saying that we're, no, we're saving, yeah, we're breaking even, or a little bit more than even, but we're also saving a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, see, understanding the kind of machine, if you flip over, people, you know, that's my quote letter, that's, that's actually a, a letter that's in jail if I'm, if I'm lying. Keep going, that's actually a lease. Keep going, the three pages to that, the very last page.
Oh, you're good.
Uh, I'm, I'm lying, next to the last page. It's got the amount showing down here on the sixty-month contract, this actually is a quote, a quote letter, which is my letter of affidavit stating that everything I'm saying here is what's coming with it, and included with the contract, is exactly what it's supposed to be, these terms match our state contract. Cause actually, depends who I'm talking to, I'm either a contract administrator, or a government account manager, whichever way you wanna talk about it.
So this, so this number's different, but this number here is different than the numbers on the other page, right?
It's that same.
Oh, okay.
That is the lease, that is the actual lease.
Right, I see that.
Is that just for the equipment?
That's for the, that is for the equipment, and the maintenance, and the meter rental, and all the things associated with operations.
It's not for the stamp, huh?
No, no, you still pay for the, you pay for your postage separately.
Okay, now, what do you think, we're trying to slow you on the go? Okay, so postage is six-ty-ten, okay? This coin bit, or whatever else you wanna call it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a stamp that's on that machine, we can buy it this year and keep it for five years.
Mm-hmm.
And it'll still be there.
I agree, yep.
So you don't, every time it goes up, it don't automatically go up in the machine? If you, if you buy, if you buy five thousand dollars.
It's gonna go up. Yeah, it goes up.
What I was trying to find out was, is when you were saying, the, the, out of my savings of the four-thirty-eight savings.
So you're like, right.
Four-eighty-one, so on, so I'm just saying, as we get through the four-hundred-something dollars, we're gonna lease that thing every month, which is fourteen-hundred and something.
Whatever, yeah.
Eighteen-hundred and four. So we're paying four-hundred-something dollars, all I'm saying is, right now, we don't have a piece of equipment.
Right.
So if we got a piece of equipment, I'm paying four-hundred dollars a month, or whatever it is. Then really, it's, that's not a savings, that's, the money, and other time, it's, it's what I'm looking at, it's what you're saying, breaking even, cause I'm gonna spend four-hundred-something dollars as I save the money on that, but it's gonna save me time.
Well, you've got, you've got, actually, you've got, you've got three things to look at. Okay, first thing, let's look at your, your issue of the forever stamp. You bought it for sixty-eight cents a piece. I don't care how long you keep it there, and they, what postal service gotta tell it? I don't care if you bought it for sixty-eight cents, and stamps go up to eighty, it's still good for that stamp, I don't care how long you got it. If you don't buy that many forever stamps, congratulations.
Yeah.
You're investing.
I understand you, dog.
But that's okay, if you bought it at that rate, it'll stay at that rate, cause you never have to pay extra, because they are a forever stamp. Most people don't buy enough to do that, they buy what's ever budgeted, what you wish to use, that's gonna last you a certain period of time, and you're most likely not gonna, generally, you're not going to see an advantage of a forever stamp difference between this postage increase and that one. You're gonna get a crossover.
We're dealing with some many stamps anyways, we were talking about stamps, mom.
You might have a handful, but it's just not gonna be a pain in the butt to do it. With a postage meter, you got sixty-eight cents stamped out, cause what you've done is you've put money with the postal service, and they're holding the money. And so now when you spend postage using a meter instead of spending sixty-eight cents, you're gonna spend sixty-five. Now, if the meter pricing goes up, it automatically goes up.
Yeah, we understand it's going up, and, but, but what I'm, the magnitude number, I say, I know you keep talking about. The magnitude numbers I'm looking at is, uh, the lease on the machine is four-thirty-eight forty-nine. So, so then we'll have a savings of four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, right?
Well, I think it's four-eight.
So what I'm saying is, is really, truly what we're doing is, and we're saving the money, we're really not.
You're really not saving anything.
Right, we're going.
You can understand, but what's the coolest thing with this, is that you're spending so much money on stamps, between the cost efficiencies of running the system properly, as well as helping do it more efficiently. The system's gonna pay for itself with the discounts you're gonna receive from the postal service, if you do it the way I'm suggesting you do it. You're gonna get the benefits of having a very nice mailing system, with Department of County, with postal savings, with notifications, et cetera, without it costing you a penny. That's what's really gonna hold out to it. But will you send a bill? I absolutely send you a bill, but you should see your postal rates go from here to here, which is the lease rate go from here to here. So you're looking at it like this, you're a break-even narrative to say, hey, I don't have to lick on, well, I have to buy a special signature.
That's what I'm saying, that's what, that's what we're getting, really, not all, what it's about is, is you pretty much break it even by having stacks and all those.
Exactly, and, and full efficiency, now, there's one other thing that you get with this, is you get a shipping solution along with the mailing system, because you've got a lot of mailing that takes place. And you can have up to fifty users on the shipping solution located throughout the county, whether that's here, or whether that's at the sheriff's office, whether that's in the probate office, where they have to go with car tag mailings, things of that nature. It's software that's loaded on the computer, that's, somebody's got actually been the administrator, say, hey, you get to be the person to use it and everything. But what I was talking about, mailing, using a piece of paper, that you print to your multi-function printer, that you've got probably ten of those at a courthouse or more. They print to it, they bring it out, fold it in half, and put your stamping on here, using the little sleeves you can buy from Uline, or somebody like that.
How many stamps do you lick a month?
I mean, I mean, I got a cute little cartoon in there, so that's.
I mean, y'all actually put the stamp on there every thing y'all send out?
Yeah, and that's, there's a lot of waste.
Yes.
There's a lot of waste on some things that, you know, you're guessing.
Yeah, on the big things, when we, when we're filling out the vanilla envelopes, the big ones, that's where we're guessing. Because we don't have a postage meter there and say, hey, let's weigh this, and we're not gonna take the time to go to the post office for one of those.
Well, man, I've got a weight machine, but.
It's not active, it's still inactive.
Well, see, in the kind of machine that I'm talking about, this is the lowest-end system that does things like this. I can walk up on this machine with a hand full of metal, right, stack this coffee. And I walk up, and I grab a handful, and I throw it on the mail machine, and press go. It takes every piece through, it weighs every piece, and it makes determinations, a letter, flat or partial, it properly addresses the machine, changes the postage amount that goes on that mail piece, it seals it, it meters it, and it stacks it. At the rate of sixty-five pieces a minute, you can't do that by hand, that fast. And I don't have to worry about, did I do it right or not? The machine's right. And, and the fact is, is that you got somebody, and then he's a digital number, he's just pulling and sticking, it's how many, how many does this need? And then you also look at the professional appearance, what can I get off the plate comes out? It's professionals, meters to the day, you drop it off, the postal service is processed, you get a faster mail service when you do it this way. Because it doesn't have to be canceled and do computers do that.
I think I've got it figured out.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, you break even to get a heck of a lot of efficiency and a lot more nicer things than you really.
You have to save more money on hours of working.
It's a footload. And that's a nice way to put it, yeah.
So what are the checks?
I mean, if.
Yeah.
I mean, cause what I can do is, is, I mean, I mean, I'll, I'll send Joyce this presentation that I've given to y'all. I mean, I should bring a lot more of it.
I'm ready to sell this thing now.
But, yes, ma'am.
You don't mind?
I do, I do mind that you asked me to do it.
It is.
Um, this is a situation where it's, it's a credit account, basically, you open a line of credit.
I don't suggest that, I never suggest that for government, yes, ma'am.
For your prepaid?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it is, uh, I do want to clarify that. Uh, the postal service really at the start, I think frankly, was it be, not be sure I saw others, play cash. Okay, that's the way I suggested for every government entity. In nineteen ninety-four, the postal service had Pity Bo's stop providing mid-range services for providing postage to customers. In nineteen ninety-six, it was reappointed to us after they pursued, and they gave us twenty million dollars. But they said, you must establish a bank, so once again, that's what we did. We gave them a credit type capabilities, and we gave them a prepaid capability. The credit capability, we make a very lot, we make a lot of money from the credit capability, I never, ever, ever recommend that to a customer. Because when you look at the credit capability, what people do, borrow money to put postage on the postage meter, just because they don't wanna bill, cause they don't wanna prepaid the postage. Nine times out of ten, they're gonna pay us forty dollars of late fee, they'll pay us another forty-something dollars for, you know, for additional services, et cetera, et cetera. It is a credit card, okay? And we make, I think we made fifty-six million dollars last year just off that credit capability. Don't please, I'm begging you not to, because I can show you how you prepaid to do the right thing, because once I get data established, I can tell you what your average monthly usage is on every single piece of mail, to say, put this much in your account every month, and have it set up as a standard AC action, you're good, you're picking, taking, and doing very well. Yes, sir.
Okay, I know you got this number, why don't you just give it to us and we get this over with?
Yes, sir.
What's the number of pieces of mail for, for the lease, for the supplies? What's the break-even point?
Uh, I got that for you. I think I do have that right here, but it's.
You got the, you got the lease, which you have, but supply.
Your, your numbers and everything are almost identically cross-referenced to the number.
Okay, so what's that number, four thousand, five thousand?
Well, right now, from what I'm looking at, you got about seventeen thousand five hundred pieces.
Matter of fact, what's the number? Matter of fact, what's the number?
What is, what is the lease?
No, what is the number of where we break even?
Well, it hasn't cost us anything, but we.
I mean, right now, it's something like, say, four thousand pieces of mail, saving that twelve cents just to get the four hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
I sent out, I sent out twelve thousand pieces of mail just the other day.
I mean.
But your number, your company knows that number.
Well, I mean, I can know that, recap, recap the number, but what I'm saying is, based off the knowledge that I have of what you have and what you presented to me.
Yeah, but you're like, sell that knowledge, to give me that number.
I'm, I'm saying is, the number here that you.
You got a sales feature, I understand.
No, I don't have a sales feature, I've got, I've got a bunch of numbers is all that I have.
Okay, so, so you're saying this number right here, that's supplies and everything?
Well, I'm giving you, I'm giving you on this page what the supplies will cost.
Yeah, but not any altogether, I'm trying, sometimes I need you to do workforce.
I'll do workforce, you'll be good. I mean, I'm, I just, I have provided everything on it, you know, because these numbers.
I mean, I can sit down and go through that, sort of, for a couple of hours, come up with a muscle, but even if you're not just having.
I mean, all I did is, what, what I generally do, and what I did for y'all, I said, this is what y'all do. This is what this machine's gonna cost, because after what you do, this is the machine I'm gonna recommend to you. Because of what you're saying, oh, I know exactly what you're saying.
You're saying four hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month, rent on the machine, lease on the machine, wherever you got it. Because if I take twelve cents a letter, so that's four thousand pieces of mail just to break even, that's not counting the ink and, and the, and the metering costs and all that stuff.
Well, if you look at your average cost per piece, your average cost per piece is a dollar a piece. It's not the sixty-three, it's not the sixty-five cents. Your average cost is about a dollar per piece, if you look at how tight the mail is running. Because see, what I was looking at here is, which page was it, we're going up now. Right now, here's what it is. I'm looking right now at what you're spending, you're gonna save roughly four hundred and eighty-one dollars. The lease is gonna cost you four hundred and thirty-eight, less supplies. Here's what the supplies cost you, and this is what the card you're using. Because what you're looking at is what's the cost of the stamp, or what's the cost of a metering print.
I'm looking at what your break-even cost for all of it.
Now, and you can choose, you can choose, like a first place, right? If I do, yeah, if you.
A first-class letter is, you can send five of these in a first-class letter, and it costs sixty-eight cents.
That's correct, or with the meter, it costs sixty-five cents. It starts getting a little fuzzy to there, that dot starts moving a tad on you, and it keeps moving on you, because then if I go over to this department, this department, his dot goes way higher. I send fewer pieces to get the same number, because.
But this, this is a.
So your number goes higher because you're, you send a lot of tags out, especially on tag change year.
Well, it depends.
If non-tag change year, they notice that very soon, tag change year, it's not helping.
It's a metal tag.
Yeah, or if it's the vinyl tags, it's not nearly as bad.
But you might have to send it out to come get your tag too, y'all still do that?
Yeah, we, we contract that out, that's part of it, it's contracted on a card, and it's specially created, I think.
I mean, because I, I spent a whole lot of time in a lot of the counties looking at the courtesy tag notifications. And I've sold a lot of software to they, to the counties, to actually send those out on reminder cards. And so, between the software and the printers that we sold for them to do that, so it made sense for them to do it. Because they use it to do property evaluations, use to do proper tag, you know, tag notifications, you know, the late notices, as well as the tag notices. Both, both homes, trailer parts, you name it, all done. And so, but there's, that service generally, if you weren't, I, at one point in time, I had to tell you the population of a county, determine whether I would do more of my while driving the county or not.
I can sell, I can send those cards out at a much cheaper rate than.
Yes.
The cards are not in, the cards are not in the mix of this.
Yeah, and because the card is a teetotal, it's separate, because you go to third party on it. And so, there's other issues that we can look at to actually help you as a county, uh, your cards being done through permanent mail. And so, that too can actually be addressed with what we do with your deposit side for your postage.
So each one of these, each one of these, on these rolls of tape right here, those are tapes are, uh, uh, one thirty-two, for, for three rolls? Is that right?
Well, it's, uh, yeah, one hundred and thirty-five, seven, that says for three rolls of adhesive tape. And those are, those have to be used when you get greater than five-eighth inch of compressed thickness of a mail piece running through. So if my mail piece is this thick, compressed, going through, it's gonna get stopped up in the machine if it's greater than five-eighth of an inch. If it's greater than that, you have it sitting over on, on a scale, instead of, now I need to push the tape button. Tape spits out something that long, you're gonna get eight hundred and eighty tapes per roll. You get three rolls per box, and that's why I'm giving you a cost per piece, three twenty-one tapes.
Right, okay.
It's just like the ink, the ink comes in one little thing, it used to look like a little blood donation thing, but now it's, it looks more like a cartridge. And that cartridge is gonna give you roughly forty-two thousand impressions on each cartridge.
Okay.
So the cost per impression for that cartridge yields less than one and a half of one cent per impression. So, because somebody who doesn't have a postage meter, I try to make sure I, I puke all over you. I give you all the stuff that you would never wanna know about what my total cost is gonna be, what's my ink cost gonna be, what's this blue water cost to me, what's my tape cost? Why am I buying tape? Why am I buying water?
I understand.
I try to do more than that, so you don't call me three months later, fussing at me, saying, dude, when you didn't tell me that about water, you, et cetera.
We could have to leave, send out the department heads, unless, I guess, pretty much all of them's here, though.
I can get, I can get more of them too, I'll, I'll email them to you. I just ran out of my whole printer file. Anybody want one?
Nope.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wanting to keep this one, if, you know.
Can you, can you give it to one of the department agencies, maybe?
I mean, because I can, literally, I can, you got a card?
I'm not.
Okay, like, I mean, I was, I was planning on sending it to Joyce anyway, just to keep the police packs them out there, but I didn't mainly. They'll be, they'll be checking down the road, they'll arrest her anyway. It's the first time.
Try to get out of the county first.
I'll try.
Now, we need the core cost, get it in the county.
Well, say it in the county, man.
Just, you just, let me box the chair back first. Is there any other questions I have for me, I mean, I'm, I don't try to be aw, awright about anything, I mean, I literally try to give as much information as I can, so that you can say I never did, give you nothing.
We appreciate it.
Ain't no problem, I mean, because generally, I get one piece of paper and a lease. And I say, this is what the cost is, and this is the lease, but, I mean, I try to make sure I give you extra shit.
We, we appreciate your time.
No problem, but the biggest thing is, what I really appreciate with the soft, with what Pitty started doing, is the software that's included with the system. It, it opens the door for so many more discounts than we've ever been able to provide people before. That software, back in my early days with Pitty, that's a two or three hundred dollar a month software piece, that's tossed in there with the mailing machine now. And it allows you to gain responsibility and, and control over shipping, because it's not just postal service, if y'all ship FedEx or UPS, that software can be loaded on there too, at your discounted rates with your carrier. And when it shops it, it literally says, oh, here's FedEx, here's UPS, here's USPS, take your pick, which one, oh, by the way, here's the anticipated date of arrival of that piece of paper. You say, wow, I must've spent fifteen dollars on FedEx, and postal service will get there the same day for half price. That sort of thing, it helps give you something to consider. And then a hundred percent of the charge back of the funds, now it says that every department can pay for their own piece of it. And, oh, yeah, by the way, if you know the percentage of who uses what, where, you can also charge back that same percentage of the lease back to that department. Just an idea. So it's not coming all out of the county by itself, it's coming out of the component departments of each one. I'm just trying to make it a little subtle. If y'all need anything, don't hesitate, shoot me an email, give me a call, if I don't answer, please shoot me an email, because half the time, I'm on the phone with somebody. Somebody's always fussing about something.
Thank you, B.
Thank y'all very much for having me.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you make it all customer.
Appreciate it.
Y'all be good, sorry, fellas, I will hold again.
Sheriff, you got anything?
We're still waiting on the, insurance, get back with some power, if that messed up. We can't forelast on there today. But once we get that, uh, I'm pretty sure they're gonna call, but, but, uh, once we get that from the insurance company, then I guess we'll have to, um, it's quarter of the month we get it, I guess, we might have to call their special call meeting, or, uh, do it at the next commission meeting, I guess, if I put it on agenda, maybe by using that money off the insurance check to purchase another one. But with Jack at Buster's, they do have a few problems, and a pretty low mileage, uh, so maybe, if, if we can get that money, and then we can get that on the agenda, then, uh, we can purchase.
How much is the car, because, I mean, we can't say if it's gonna, let me just say this, I guess. Have we, find out how much money's coming back yet?
That's what we've just heard from the insurance company. What we figured out is totaled about fifty-five thousand, I think.
You think you'll get fifty-five thousand?
I doubt it.
It only had thirty-three hundred miles, eh?
Uh, forty-five hundred.
So.
It's not, it's not a replacement value there, it should not leave you.
I bet they won't give you replacement, but how much?
Well, bringing that, uh, uh.
If they do, I'd be very surprised.
But, but some of the cars are full, it's full coverage.
Full coverage, but.
All, even Joyce's house, is?
Replacement value.
Mine is, mine is not replaced, and mine is just, uh.
Because it comes out of Joyce's, but that would be a no-brainer, that.
I think it's just liability, I think that's what I was told, that it was just liability. I don't know, because I, I questioned that some years ago, while we would have a vehicle that wasn't completely covered.
Because if it got wrecked, if it got wrecked, uh, right after budget, she'd have to have.
I'd have to have you.
A hundred percent, it needs.
I'll check a lot.
Any insurance comes out of her car.
And I don't think, I mean, like, as far as that fitting, that stuff ain't gonna be covered.
Well, it's, that's destroyed, that, that stuff is destroyed, because, I mean, the roll bars.
And this was in a chase, so, this was in a chase, right?
Yes.
And the person who was chasing, did they have insurance on their vehicle?
No, you're.
Just wondering.
I know, I know we talk about two control vehicles, I don't know about the Douglas County.
Well, that, listen, they were out of the way, he was running back at sixty mile an hour and run into them.
But, but, you know, when they have full coverage, it, it compensates, I mean, we could have got money out of it.
Yeah, they got, yeah.
That's the reason I'm asking.
He could have.
They did have him.
Okay.
Did we charge him?
Oh, yeah, he's, we got in charge with, uh,
Stupid murder.
Two counts of attempted murder, one for our guy, one for Tom, this guy.
Resitation, or what is it?
A slew of charges.
So Sheriff's got that part handled, but let's talk about the price of that vehicle. So, so, so you don't, you'll know, you think you'll know in two weeks if you go and get?
I hope so, I hope it's.
What I'm saying is, they ain't gonna sell them a lot at Buster's, if they got one that they can get, could we not go ahead and look at putting it on the agenda, if we're gonna get a price on that, should we go ahead and be getting that vehicle?
But that would have to do with bid spec on it, too.
How long could it take to get a new, have you checked?
Oh, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't get another until next year.
Have you checked it?
I will have to, I know all in that earth gonna be spoken for, I mean, because everybody's, got a crisis with vehicles, and then you have to be put on the, uh, uh.
Do you get that number to, uh, Chad? About, he said he might be able to.
Oh, yeah, 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 we got that thing, yeah. But I haven't heard nothing from him, though.
Well, I will call him again.
Okay.
Okay.
But you have to be put on a build list, before you can get one off the safety list.
Well, the reason I asked about replacement cost is I know that, um, you know, we had a couple of tractors that burned up. I've been back and forth with the insurance underwriter about what they're gonna offer for replacement, because if you're actually, they know that you're replacing it, they look at that value as part of what they're deciding on. I mean, they'll say, well, we know that the veh, the vehicle that you buy may be cost more than what the vehicle that just got destroyed is, but we're saying that we can, the closest we can get to that vehicle that got destroyed is this amount of money, and then maybe over that, uh, it depends on how the, how the policy's.
Right.
So how much, you know how much vehicle I want for it, uh?
Patrick talked to Andy, I'm not a hundred percent sure, calling him, he didn't tell you, though.
Yeah, we're trying to, I'm just trying to figure out if, 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 from my understanding, is the vehicle's gonna sell them a lot.
Yeah.
And if, uh.
If I'm not mistaken, I think he said they're from about twenty, twenty-five-ish to about thirty-four-ish, somewhere in there, I think.
And then I just gotta put, have y'all got the stuff, the deck discs in mind, you gotta buy that?
We're gonna have to buy that, yeah.
So do you wanna make a, you want a resolution made?
I would just think we need to go ahead and move in, get the vehicle, because they're not gonna get, I don't wanna go wait another year or something, that's, if they got the money and the car's sitting over there, and they gotta have somebody to drive.
Do you have a resolution to do that, though?
Well, there's gonna be a difference in the money, we gotta pay it out now.
Insurance money's gonna go in the general fund, isn't it? So you gotta have a resolution to, to spend that money out of the general fund.
But you can just adjust his budget.
I, I was.
It's a justice budget.
I just thought that he had it. The right.
You know, that's one of the biggest topics that we had with Katie Britt's, uh, person who come down representing her, was that they, that, it's not just how, it's not just how they say it were, that the, the federal government needs to step in and, and all these incentives they give to all these car manufacturers and our first responders, where all these cars are getting burnt in all these big municipalities, where they just throw a gas bomb or whatever into them thing. And then us lower counties is, is still suffering, because, I mean, that car was fifty-six thousand dollars. And, and when, when stuff like this happens, I mean, it's just, it's just a big burden. So, uh, where, where they, where they would make it more accessible, more readily, where if you're gonna buy, across the United States of America, you're gonna buy eight, a hundred, hundred thousand of those, uh, explorers, and they gotta be pursuit vehicles, should be sitting on a warehouse somewhere instead of these dang electric vehicles. They can go after that, I'm just saying, for law enforcement, need to talk Trump.
See, they, they'll send out the bid list, or the build list, you know, X amount of months before it starts. And then you have to tell them, I mean, you won't, or might won't.
Well, well, one of the search department I heard had asked for sixteen vehicles this past year. I know they didn't buy sixteen.
COVID has put inventory, they figured out that we stupid. The American people are stupid, and they'll wait for something.
Yeah.
And that, that's where it's at, because in the past, they've had this inventory sitting on lots of them, you just wanna have them.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's a more federal bit of crap. But you need to look and see about a rider to put on his insurance that covers the, the roll bar and cage and where it.
I agree, it should.
Yeah, but it's great hard.
You can get a rider to put on an insurance policy, they'll cover other stuff.
So we'll get that number together for us, we can get it to Lisa, so we have that.
Y'all want a resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Does, does he need a resolution, or should he just not?
No, he's just got, he's taking, it's not, we don't know if we're gonna get it, but the government, Joe, I'm sure they'll do a resolution. And then, that way, he should have, if he can get that vehicle, he can go ahead and get that vehicle, and then what, it's going in the vehicle, and go over, and this is what I need. So vehicle and making that car out of.
We need to have, we need to have to change his budget.
Now, we're gonna start, we're gonna start with this.
One resolution. Resolution is take the money out of general fund and change his budget. I, I don't, I'm like you, so I don't think we have to, I think he, he can buy, if y'all want a resolution, it's fine.
Come back, and then there'd be, when that goes in the general fund, then you're, then you're adjusting his budget.
So you got the money to buy?
I had to look.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'm off the air.
I was, I was gonna say, I was gonna say your video, but.
Yeah.
In his general budget, he should have that, he should.
Y'all made.
I mean, there's probably enough in there, I would say there's enough in there, but as far as waiting months down the road, though.
Well, you're just waiting for the insurance check to kick in, and then the adjustment will be made.
Y'all have made a resolution to pass it, even the, the right.
This, this vehicle is gonna cost, we should get more money than what we're paying for, what we're paying for now. So, so when this money, when this money here comes in, which come out of general fund to start with, so the money is going to general fund, we're only gonna give him enough to buy that vehicle.
Yeah.
We're not giving him all the money on the insurance and everything, so what he will do is, he will give us, the, the, go buy that vehicle, twenty-seven thousand, what, fifty million, and then it's probably gonna cost every bit of three, two or three thousand to get it decked out.
Easily.
Well, whatever.
Yeah.
And then he will come back with that, now, hopefully, we'll get enough to buy it, but at the end of the day, whatever it is, it just goes in the general fund, it's over with.
You said we need a resolution?
No, I didn't say we need a resolution, I just said that.
Do you think we need a resolution?
To purchase the vehicle, or just to talk about looking at the, using the money from the insurance to purchase another vehicle?
If he's got the money in his budget, we don't have to do nothing, because then we're gonna replace that money when he gets the insurance, but if you take the money out of the general fund, you got a resolution.
Okay. That's what I was saying, he just took it on his.
But I mean, he had, he had the rights, he had purchased. But I mean, he had, he had the rights, he had purchased it, y'all already gave him, and he lost it, so he needs to. But, but insurance money always goes to the general fund, it don't go back to the department.
But then it's just a, it's just a adjustment.
I know, the only thing I was gonna do, let me say this, the only thing I was gonna do is, he's gonna give me a number. And we'll put down on there twelve cents, not thirteen cents or fourteen, twelve cents, it's just, I'm just using that number. Then it's free, and then when the money goes in there, it might be a thousand dollars more, or it might be a thousand dollars less. But then the thing, we don't carry it for him as a general fund anymore.
All right, so Mr. always wants a resolution.
You get us the number right?
Yeah, we'll give you the number there.
Wants to make a resolution that we. Take our general fund to, uh.
Purchase.
To purchase a new vehicle for the sheriff, and the.
The only exception, uh, ever we've ever made for that is if you have already agreed that this something is going to be used. Like in these instances, where it just practically went up, use that money in that insurance for that. In which case, we can actually deposit straight against that expense, and that way he's gonna replace budget, right? So there is that.
Road car, it's better than that, line out for expenses for equipment.
Right.
You've already spent your line out for, for cars and.
Like if, if he's got, say, a, a fixed asset line or a vehicle, if he's budgeting for that. But what I'm saying is, if you say, hey, we're gonna put that money back in that account, so he can purchase another vehicle, then we can directly do that. But in, in a case like this, where you don't know if, you may have additional money left over from the insurance. That it's not gonna take to replace the vehicle, if that were to be, to be the case, because you can buy a new vehicle and purchasing a, use one in that case. You would want anything extra to stay in, if you're on fine, because you paid for it, start it.
Exactly.
That is it.
Okay, so you can make a new resolution. About here.
All the years.
It ain't big deal.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying, I know we may disagree on this, but you, if you want y'all to do that.
You hear, they don't sell again this vehicle, because we only got two weeks, and that, that way you go ahead and say, this is what I'm gonna get, and this is what I'm gonna do.
New business, or y'all consent, can I get an intent on this? Consent?
And then we already had cameras fixed, of course, it was just, had a windshield and a seat plate that went in it, but it's not that big of a deal. Part of it with the headrest, so we've replaced the headrest with another vehicle that was broke down. And then just all the windshield, so three hundred something bucks, and it's back good and together, so.
Uh, one of the things that was brought up too, and I was talking to Chad, and it's probably something that's gonna be on next year. Uh, I think we're somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of vehicles in the past year. And then, uh, here we are with another fifty-five more vehicles gone. Uh, I really think we need to, uh, talk, I talked to Chad, and I'm gonna be talking with Randy. I really think we need to look at this legislation that, uh, the sheriff has, has presented to Randy. And just see if, if, if the commission wants to get behind it, or leak it, or whatever, to support that resol- legislation on, uh. Where we would have money to, instead of a deputy without a vehicle every time, or we might have one on the side of the border. That they can just get in like they do in Oxford and Anderson, but I mean, at some point, if, if the way these vehicles are going, no more wrongs we're getting out of, that we get out of them now. I think it's, I think it's something that we need to look at about trying to create some kind of funding, the twenty thousand dollar days are over with. Every time we touch a vehicle, it's in the forties and fifties.
Well, we just, with, with, uh, Todd, you know, Todd was the one up front, and the last one we bought was thirty-eight thousand dollars, and now it's fifty-two thousand.
Yeah. And, uh, and I think, uh, the proposal you put together would generate about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year.
Ninety, I think it was ninety, now that was, if three dollars been on the sheriff's office, two dollars on the fire departments, it's off of the numbers I got from.
I'm working on cars.
Oh, yeah, 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 because a hundred and fourteen for three of them.
Right.
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of that proposal?
I did, at least, I sent it to, or paid, I sent it to.
I'll come back.
Um, I know that we were saying, um, and it actually came to this office, and I think Paul said that you actually shared on yours. There was an insurance settlement that we were saving last week for bigger image on the vehicle. He needs to unlock it, Chad, we're going to your office, or?
I think they was trying to get every piece of the proposal together, once we got the estimate and all that stuff. Then we was gonna hold it until we got all that together, then send it all back in kind of one package.
I got you.
So it wouldn't be scattered and free, if you sell them, yeah. It wasn't like we were gonna split it or nothing, we just were gonna get everything in one package, that way we could send it all at one time.
Okay, that's perfect.
Yeah. That's what that was about.
And I kind of thought that they wouldn't, so I just thought.
Because there's so many, I think we got two of, vehicle, or two of deer, then possibly a dog, and then, I think there may be one more. Uh, and with three or four out there, kind of might get kind of abused and, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, just another update on money for the sheriff's department. Those hot water heaters, uh, we was able to tweak it and go with, uh, one, and when we was looking at it, I didn't realize there was three. And, uh, and hopefully the other would come in, but we're gonna be at twenty-eight thousand, right, around twenty-eight thousand dollars for all the hot water heaters. But I really believe, uh, that we're gonna have a lot of savings on gas, because I cannot believe. When we tore that one apart, we had to cut it, and had to get it out of them up there, where exactly, you might have to break the roof off. And, uh, and, uh, but, uh, these things are gonna be so much more efficient, I really think it's gonna really cut down. So we're gonna, uh, check through four months with, uh, uh, left, uh, gas bills. And then, uh, compared to three or four months last year.
How much, did you say a year was, was it every year, every two years, you had to have those fittings inspected, changed out?
I'm ready to go back.
I mean, so they went to like three thousand dollars.
Three years, yeah, that's thirty-five thousand dollars.
And, and, and let me say, let me say this new, and I talked to Fred about it today, and I'm gonna get with Kelly. Uh, because I was looking in those lines for the, where, because when you go back there behind the sales, they got these little diaphragms, and these things are two hundred. And because I've been online trying to find them cheaper myself. They're two hundred something dollars for this little thing. And I think it was Joyce was telling me today, man, I was talking about it, uh, the water around here is hard. And I started putting a filter, and I think what, we were all.
Saltine.
Yeah, but instead of doing that, put up a saltine there, but, uh, but what, so, but if you looked at these bores, I don't know how any of those tires work. I really don't, so I think, I think it's gonna cut down on maintenance at the jail, as far as replacing these little bottles. But I'm gonna get Kelly the price, because, uh, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get Kelly to give me some ideas on that, it might be something we wanna do. Just to think about, because, uh, to keep all that trash and stuff out of those little diaphragms. And, and those little plastic vines, it's gonna be just a smart bill, I think, to try to cut down on maintenance on all those things.
But that one bore, that's probably that much deal with.
I couldn't believe it, I mean, I make that, I took pictures of it, it was something else.
They look like orange clothes.
Uh, that's what you get on your service part of it, uh, but about twenty-eight thousand, what we're looking at. Uh, the one on the, on the other side, it's just one pod that, that is working, so we're waiting on the eighty-five gallon one.
Over there.
And it's, and it, it is a little bit cheaper, but I got Fred to send me just a close number, uh, that they will put it in as soon as it comes off the shelf this week. So we'll be through it, it's gonna be about twenty-eight thousand dollars.
You got the money in your budget for that?
That's why.
Now, what?
All right, so anything else?
And, uh, does Jeff has all, uh, August? June, July? Yeah. Just wanna keep up with that. Reason why, uh, I met, finally got my brick guy to meet over there on our leak, and, uh, when he looked at it, he has dealt with that. This guy took over, he says, the most, when he looked at it, he just shook his head, he says, the brick goes all the way into the building, don't it? And I said, yeah, and he said, yeah. He said, but what he's looking at doing is, instead of going over that cap up there, he's looking at taking about a four inch flange. Cutting back into the brick all the way above that other one, because the other one is turned back to the jail. So he's gonna bring it out, make sure it steps down, and then he's gonna point up all the cracks, and, and where the bricks are knocked out and missing. And then he's gonna go back over that whole wall with a sealer, he said he believe we'll be able to knock that out. He's gonna give me a price on it in the next few days, so.
I'll just throw three more leaks in my office.
Yeah, but that's your office, I thought you liked this car. But, but anyway, this guy, I, I've been dealing with that one there, but, but, but on that building, I've never owned one that didn't leak somewhere. But I mean, I may be able to work towards it, but I think getting that main lobby done would be nice, because I've been dealing with that for about three or four years.
Okay.
So everybody's good on the twenty-eight, so you're gonna get with Lane to find out if he's got the money to pay for this or what?
I'm pretty sure it's healthy.
I do too. That's why you know I'm bringing it up tonight, because, uh, which our bills are coming in, we're paying for the parts, it's come, all the parts is coming off us. Uh, the biggest thing that we got is, uh, fifty-four hundred and eighty dollars in labor.
Well, let me just say this, whatever he's got, spend that money at first, and then we'll do a resolution to, to do the rest.
Balance, okay, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make sure y'all know what the numbers is, money I'm spending.
Do y'all want a resolution now?
We only had twenty-five thousand one year, and we've done spent, we've only got thirteen thousand of that left already.
We're halfway through the year, so that's about right. I mean, on average year, that would work out about right. Do you want a resolution, or do you want to adjust his budget? Whatever y'all want to do, don't matter to me.
I'm just getting, I'm just getting, I'm just getting a watch cost, so y'all won't be mad at me.
I say adjust the budget, that's what y'all, that's what I'm asking.
You good with adjusting the budget?
Yeah.
You want to have a resolution to adjust the budget, don't you?
But no, I'm.
No, we'll do it until the end of the year.
We don't have.
So, so, so then, we could use Lane's money for the, uh, brick guy? Some of your money for the brick guy? For selling.
I mean, the twenty-five, the twenty-five thousand dollars we put in the budget, that's about what we spend every year just on regular maintenance and repairs.
Okay.
So anything?
Anything else?
It's rolling there.
We better just chew on this, uh, this hot water heater, and maybe, but I don't wanna go ahead and get a price on that. Getting, I don't wanna get that wall pointed up, so I'll get a price on that myself, just see what it is, it might not be about twelve hundred dollars, or it might be fifteen hundred, that's what I'm getting off of them. I don't know.
Joyce, you got anything?
I was just, I was just gonna, um, answer a question that Ms. Collins had last, last for extension about where we were as far as money. And I, I think I sent that to you all, I don't know if anybody got it or not, but just a breakdown. And, and I kinda did this in, um, from two thousand and four, just kinda giving you a breakdown of what each entity that I collect for, for the county. Um, what, what we've been collecting for, and back in twenty-twenty, looks like we collected five hundred, a little over five hundred and thirty-seven thousand for the, uh, county general fund. And fast forward to twenty-twenty-three, and I'm not completely done, but we're at seven hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. And that's almost, not, well, it's a little, little, right at ninety thousand dollars more than it was last year at the same time, for just the county general fund. So if that's giving you some idea, we also on the, uh, and I, I apologize, I, I don't have my glasses, and that, this is definitely.
You don't mind?
No, I, well, I probably could, I'll say, in twenty-twenty, on the, uh, tax collector, tax accessory fees, that y'all get all of that as well. In twenty-twenty-four, no, in twenty-twenty, we collected a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And this year, we've collected, uh, already collected two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Ooh, that's good.
So, uh, you're not, you're not down in revenues from, from my office, you're, you're up quite a bit, so. And, you know, that kinda, once they set those values, that's set for at least four years. So you're not gonna be losing any money, I, I guess, at that point.
On inflation?
Yeah.
So it went up enough to do half a mile road?
Yeah, half a mile road, now the road and bridge, road, now that you said that, let me, I, I actually did the breakdown for road and bridge as well. Road and bridge, uh, back in twenty-twenty was two hundred and fifty thousand, a little over two hundred and fifty thousand. And if I can get this stupid thing to work right. There it goes. We're at three hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Three hundred and what?
Forty-eight. Three hundred and forty-eight thousand.
So it's going up in the right direction, but still.
It's not, not to replace the road, yeah.
It's not a lot of money.
No, it's not, it's, you're definitely gonna have to have federal help with, with roads.
It's just the cost of the road, really.
Yeah.
Your turn, you gotta go fast, gotta go fast.
Okay, I'm just gonna, most of my, it's not requiring a resolution, just a couple little things to report on. Uh, it's time for our annual reports that we do for L A T C F and Arco expenditures. Um, L A T C F one actually had to be done by March thirty-first, that's been done. And the Arco one is due by the end of April, and all the information that has been turned into the I E C, they have a spreadsheet together, and it makes that easier. Solvates the whole process of putting that in, um, so all that's going well, um, let's see. I'm also working on getting a report together as of the end of March for what has been spent and collected for the first half of the year. March includes the first six months, so hopefully I will have something for you at the next work session. I don't think I would have it ready for the commission meeting, just because it's only a couple of weeks away, and we'll just have to finish March. But I, I will try to have you some numbers together to see how things are looking at each department, uh, at the next work session. And then, um, also been working with, I know you're a little bit familiar, that we have, are a little bit aware, that we have been working with the bank on a positive pay system. I spent about an hour today working with them on the formatting, what it requires for us to turn in a report to them. That basically is a list of all of our checks and their payees, to try to make sure that there's been fraud involved in any of our checks. So that's kinda just what we've been working on here at our department. And then, of course, we've been working with the sheriff's department a little bit on the insurance claims, and I've been working on one of the claims that Lee had on one of his tractors. Which has taken quite some time to get that through, but it's kind of what we've been dealing with this month.
Okay, questions? Yeah, could you explain to everybody about the board of education deal?
Yes.
Because. It was on the round in May here.
Right, we, um, we actually met with, um, Chad and with Melissa Lumpkin from his office. About, um, the board of education and how much sales tax that, it kind of felt like they were not sure that what they had received, everything that they were supposed to ever say. They basically had a decrease in sales tax of about two point one nine percent, um, from the previous year. But I think it was a combination of issues of going from avenue over to Alba apartment revenue. And because of that timing, they were not counting one of the months that of sales tax that we collected, um, from Alba apartment revenue. It's collected through Alba apartment revenue. I think once they realized that that was the, the case, that they were down to understanding that we had only lost a couple of percentage points on, on their sales tax revenues for the year. Um, I'm working with Melissa to try to get something set up where we can get money to them quicker, as far as, uh, what's collected through Alba apartment revenue. Because there's about a six-week delay on the actual, that it gets collected at the sales point, it's turning to Alba apartment revenue. We're waiting till the end of the month, and then sending a check out for their part of the sales tax, a couple of weeks later with the first AP of the month. Well, they, their reporting requires that they, they actually report everything because of them dealing with the state as much as they do their reporting. They had to have in them like thirty days, so I'm working on setting up an E F T for them to deal with that. I think there was just a little, they were, they were expecting an increase in sales tax revenue, and that, that did not happen. Now, the two percent fluctuation, that's not uncommon. They have a list of all the years of what they had collected in sales tax, it's up and it's down, it's up and it's down, that's not uncommon at all. I think a combination of them expecting an increase, and then the changeover, and they thought they had really lost like over ten percent, and they had not. And it was because they weren't counting a month of revenue, I think that was the issue. And I think they're, they seem pretty understanding of the time we, we sat down and talked about it. I think they had already come to a lot of the conclusion, because I had already settled them a lot of data, a lot of the, the reports that I have, that showed how much they should have collected. I think they had come to that realization already before we met, so they were a little bit more understanding about the fact that there was just a two percent decrease. Uh, I also explained that Brina Upchurch, with the examiner's office, they contacted me because she was looking at their audit. And anytime there's a big decrease like that in their sales tax that they were collecting, um, they looked to make sure the Alba apartment revenue is actually doing their portions right. Getting all their percentages right, and I have not heard anything back from her, which leads me to think that they probably did have it right. She said they usually do have it correct, but she, they, they have to check on that, and I explained to her the timing issues. And she said she would come to that conclusion as well, that there was a little bit of a timing issue there for them. So they were good.
Getting those two face to face, what it takes, big thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, y'all are very professional.
Can you explain to them all this that you do, and it's free, right, but we don't, they talk to me.
Yes.
So that was like, we were charged. Because they was like, we're charging them.
We did, we talked about that, there's no charge. Uh, there, there is a charge for elections, the Alba Department Revenue charges.
And that's what I told them.
It's basically about the same thing Avenue charges and we kinda split those administrative costs. Um, of course, you know, you can say exactly how much they charge on the report, so that, that made that pretty simple. They realize that we didn't, we don't charge anything extra for collecting sales tax for them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, like Lee had talked to you about, we need to make a decision on the van?
Yes, um, Lee had, uh, said that he has not had any applicants for, um, for Warren's position than his vacant now. So he wants to know, uh, what kind of decision we need to make on the van and, and where to go from there. He's got a couple of those as well, but what do you think about that?
Let me ask you this, when you, when the applications went out, did they just go out locally? Did you put it in the Anderson Star or, or we, or, or we spread it out or we just keep it to one little small area?
Okay, now unless there has been some sort of, um, asking of the Human Resources Department to do this, it has always been posted in our public locations and put on our county website or Facebook page for both. Um, I think that sometimes a, uh, department head will request that she also put it on Indeed and that, that is something that can happen as well. To my knowledge, that is the only.
What does it cost to put someone on Indeed?
Um, Indeed is free if I'm not mistaken.
You may have to know Warren.
Yeah, I think Indeed is a free, now you get a lot of applications, it's a lot of weeding through. But, um, you know, it usually doesn't take very long to reject one if you can pretty much immediately see that they're not qualified. But, um, that is an option. And then, of course, if you go to advertising in a paper, a lot of people don't look in a paper anymore, a lot of people look online. I'd say online is your better, better bet.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, curious because I know the Anderson Star has that, you know, that have that area where you can move.
Yeah, and then just, a lot of folks have gone away from that, you know, it's not as.
They're looking at websites online for three counts.
Y'all, y'all, you're making, you're sneaking, trying, Anderson Star is just three days a weekend, nobody under forty years, Anderson Star. Lee has talked to me about the van deals and this is sort of what he wants. He either wants us to say, put it back out to bid and expand it like she was just saying. Wants to know if you're gonna raise the salary or we need to send the man back. He wants, he wants somebody to tell him what to do.
Let's put it back out there, let's, let's just broaden our, the application, you know. And you was talking about not that Anderson Star, but the majority of the people that is gonna be over that fifty age that would, would want that job. It's not gonna be the younger generation that's gonna want that job.
I bet some people have asked me, but I haven't seen anybody go up for the application.
I think, what, I had talked to Lee and you correct me, I'm wrong, I don't know if you know or not. Three people that called and said, was it paid and they never come for the application.
Well, in my experience, I know we had a, a driver for our senior van in the city I worked for. And it was, it was an owner person that liked to participate in activities at the center, so they would drive the van. And that, it was a paycheck, but it was, it was, it was not really many, but made a living off of it, it was just a little extra money for your time for helping deliver meals and deliver people.
Yeah, somewhere around the city, it's, it's, it's like what Laura says, it's somebody that needs to be picked up in the van to start with.
Yeah, what, board of education, they're having a hard time getting both.
Speaking of which, does East Alabama, I know that they have their senior aid kind of things like we use up here, do they? Have you ever heard of them having any part in that?
But I'll reach out to them and ask them.
I mean, it's worth a shot, not that they're gonna lose, they'd say no, you know.
All right, we, well, I guess staying with Lee. Uh, we stayed up with, uh, uh, I need five hundred dollars for my discretionary fund, the Lee, uh, for fixing the, the softball field. He, he did the park and he fixed it over by the memorial, he fixed all that for us. And, uh, also, and this here is one thing that turned out real well, uh, I said, we set up for the, uh, for the job fair at the rep center in Heffernan. And I think it was, it was a lot of people that showed up. And Lee, I called Lee because, uh, Tommy Wood, which is the guy that puts it on from the high school. And if you want to don't know, that's from all, all the kids from all over the county, we bring a lot of kids on the bus from Ramburn and everything and they come in. And, uh, the one that I went to, uh, a couple of years back in, uh, Oxford. We went, we went through those areas and what was the wild thing about it is they had a back, trackhoe sitting out there in the backhoe. And you had all these job things that was going on in there. And the line to get on the trackhoe and the backhoe would come across the parking lot. And, uh, and, and that, and I sort of talked, but, uh, there's a lot of our kids in our rural area like this that's wanting to be engineers. And it's a big demand for them, uh, and that's what I was going over for him to take some drawings over there and lay them out. But also, also with that new company, they were out of town, they're in town, at Enne, or whatever, uh, back there across from the city, all the big construction company. Uh, the last drawing I did, that was probably like forty different types of engineers when you're building a high-rise building, you know, from, uh, whether it's a plumbing engineer, electrical engineer, all different types of engineers for these buildings. But anyway, one thing of all that turned out great and one thing it was, Lee also talked about like the eighteen-year-olds that, that lives up in Frugor, Ford Springs, uh, down in Hollis, out towards Ramburn, that maybe, might not be the college type right now. But what Lee was thinking is, is if he could get them that's eighteen years old, that maybe at that point, you know, he could offer them deals like a C D L license. You know, that would give them an opportunity to go, you know, and, and where they would work with us for a couple of years to, to make that happen. So it was an idea that man had come up with. But what he did say, which is always when we get something for nothing like this, is he would ask us to, to look at bucks in about a thousand dollars. Uh, about a thousand dollars so he can buy some hard hats and some stuff because he's just sitting there with a playing table. And you know, Lee, he's got, he's, he's a sports guy, he wants to be competitive, competition, I mean. But, uh, so, uh, how would y'all feel about doing that? Uh, did y'all wanna do, uh, two hundred and fifty a piece from our, uh?
This is what we're gonna do, we halfway through the year.
Okay, y'all want?
This is what, this is what we're going to make sure.
He was saying something, I don't forget exactly what he was saying, but he was asking for it, so. Uh, but if not, uh, talk with him tomorrow, if not, uh, we'll take it out of my, uh, because I feel like importantly, he's gonna do that for me, I'm gonna pay him, if he's got, if he's got something else, let's find out if he's planning on doing it this year.
I know, he's got another one.
Yeah, because, because he was asking me about the money, I'm like, well, why do you need the money? Because of the job fair.
Professional, I was waiting for that this year.
Yeah, just see if he needs them for this year. You know, but he, he sort of finished with me like, well, I thought, you know, we'll be meeting. And I think, uh, Chris also set up one. I was able to set all the tables up and do all the work, but I wasn't able to go because I had another project I was working on that day.
There might be something for Ryan too, from Jay.
Yeah. And, uh, but, but, but what, what, uh, me and Lee have found out and what talking with Mr. Wood is a lot of these kids that's out there that lives down some of these county roads that are over, they don't, you know, the only time that they get an opportunity, they say, well, you may as well make it to the county and find a job, because I mean, they're out there in the, you know, I mean, the county's in the middle of nowhere, so. To get these kids an opportunity that don't, might not have that opportunity to go to college, these jobs might mean something to them. Instead of going down the sad road or drugs or problems.
There was one more thing that Lee had asked me, Brina Upchurch, it's, um, he says right now he's purchasing safety supplies, like glasses and all that. Did he bring that up to you?
Yeah.
And, um, he's, he's wanting to know if he could just reimburse his workers that are purchasing like their own boots, gloves, uniforms and that kind of thing. Maybe, maybe seven hundred dollars a year to, uh, purchase those things and reimburse employees for that.
I think, I think, man, Steve, remember when Ronnie was here? And, uh, and Ronnie couldn't, wouldn't, didn't not wear all the, because we furnished them the uniforms. And, uh, but I think it was only like about, but I don't know now. But, uh, I would make sure, might want to run it by the attorney that we could do something like it, it's gonna be reimbursed, will they have receipts or not?
Remember we had a song that was going out and purchasing?
Yeah, well, that, well, what that was is, uh, yeah, I know the one that you're talking about, so. But I think, uh, you know, at the end of the day, they gotta come to work and furnish all their equipment right now. But the only thing I brought to him, we still gotta have a box of those, whatever that OSHA approved safety glasses is, you know, on the job site.
That's what I'd be concerned about is that you lose control over what kind of supplies they're buying. Because if you tell somebody that they have to go out and buy composite tape boots or steel tape boots and they just go out and buy heavy boots and then they get themselves hurt, then what you've paid for their boots are really worth.
And I think, I think, I think, I think he needs to come up with some type of program that he wants. Because that's what we did, we had a, we had a, a book that we had ordered out of when Ronnie was doing it. And, uh, but, but they pay a lot for those and the guys wind up washing most of the uniforms themselves, you know.
All right, is that all?
That's all I have.
All right, so any other resolutions you guys wanna add?
I think, uh, I think we are to, uh, do you think we ought to move forward with, uh, maybe reaching out to the interviews that we did today? And, uh, or do we, I mean, somewhere in the middle, we need to reach out and maybe sit down and have a couple of.
Do you wanna put down a resolution that, you wanna make a resolution that we, uh?
But it might be offered not anyway, the number that we're talking about.
Make an offer on, uh, both positions?
I'll sit down and talk with them and, and see, uh, what we can get to.
Which I was pleased with, I know.
So we, we need to sit down and talk and decide what we're, what we're going to do.
But y'all, you, you gonna put it out for another month?
I believe, that's what I'm saying, that we just decided to make.
We, you, you wanna do it tonight, we have, we have a work session tonight, you can talk about it, or you can talk about it, or do you wanna have a resolution set up that you can?
Or, or?
Or, yeah, you can make an offer.
We should forward our resolution, we want to move forward.
Then we got one candidate for administrator, we got two for finance, so we gotta take the finance and merit down to one.
And that's, that's the salary for both of these positions. That's the number of the salary that you're gonna offer for these two positions.
Well, I mean, so y'all, y'all wanna make, make recommendations, you have a resolution to hire, uh, a county administrator or make an offer for county administrator and make an offer on, uh, on a foster?
Correct.
All right, if you put that and just, um, put that on your business, I mean, because you're gonna have to fill in the name, you have to decide the name.
Fill in the name and amount or?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Unless I'm looking at y'all, unless y'all see that.
Yeah, if you don't come up with a name or a number, if they, you can't come up with agreement, then, uh,
You're gonna say something bad?
You're gonna say nothing.
So everybody's gonna have their own?
Well, I mean, you could, well, I mean, that's just what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We decide tonight what we're gonna do. Unless y'all wanna decide.
I can't really decide tonight what we're gonna do, you just come up with a number that you can work with. I think you're gonna have to sit down and negotiate at the table and then whatever that negotiation comes back. Well, you, I mean, to try to have four doing it, I think, in my mind, and I might be wrong, and I'll ask Jason about this tomorrow. Uh, maybe you need to have two commissioners to meet and sit down and, and have a conversation. Because at the end of the day, you know, and then you come back and say, well, this is what they agreed to and if you don't like it, then, you know, you don't have to put their name down. Because it ain't like you got twenty people we're talking about, we're talking about two. So, you see, is that what we did that round?
Yeah, I, I, I would say so, you can take two of you or, or, or one of you or two of you and, and y'all make a recommendation back to the group.
I'll make that.
So to be clear, you will write two resolutions, one for county administrator position, one for CFO with a blank on the amount and the person.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless, unless, unless our county attorney thinks that that's the wrong way to do it.
Yeah.
And that's it for y'all, but I, I, I don't want us to be late, I, I don't want us to be waiting, I mean, I don't think y'all will wait anymore, do you?
No. We have to be careful with, you know, that timing because, um, you don't want people to be in the areas and having those positions take other jobs or change their minds and decide on it. They can't wait.
Right. Okay.
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think negotiating in five days.
So what we're saying right now, let me make sure I got this straight. Mr. Hurd and Ms. Copeland, we're gonna offer a job.
Correct.
Okay. And, and that's, this is how we're gonna eliminate, uh, I can't remember what her name was.
Wait, wait, yeah.
I don't know if we had a meeting or what could this, you can, you can put it, you can, you can put that name in.
Well, you gotta, you gotta do this, you gotta come up with a name to put on the resolution, so right now you don't have a name to put on there, so.
But what I'm saying is, so at the meeting, we're gonna narrow it down from two to one. So, how, you gonna talk to all three about money?
No. I think, I think one is not qualified, they didn't have the.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so here tonight, are we knocking down the two from three?
That's right.
Okay, but you, but you need to take one or two of you to, to go and negotiate and then come back to the, the commission and make that recommendation, see if everybody's gonna go all that, because you.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, it's, it's just a negotiation and then if the commissioner comes back and you say, you don't get three votes, you don't win.
Yeah.
Totally.
Yeah.
And if, and if they don't agree, then you ain't gonna have no name.
Who, who among y'all wanna do that?
I don't.
Do it.
Okay.
Anybody wanna go?
So you and Ron can do that?
Yeah, me and Ron can do it.
Right, you do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But if we gather up, we'll have it on the, um,
New business.
New business to make there.
And we have the names, we just, because that's already been discussed, we just.
You got to come, yeah, you got to negotiate the cost.
Yeah.
It becomes your job, your, your job position posted, you know, what you got on there, what the requesting is totally different.
I would actually leave the name still off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't put the name, I just, what I would, because you can't put somebody's name on a resolution, they have a resolution.
Well, I mean, yeah, the resolution just wouldn't, it'd die.
I know in the minutes I saw earlier today, so I was just looking at it, I was done, they, uh, it was nine blanks. They had like you said, the person's name and then the amount, but it looked blank and then underneath it, it said the person's name. Like just in italic size, you know, letters.
And we had a lot more, uh, we had a lot more. I think we need to get some names along that, come to the resolutions and then we'll go. Well, that's, I'll, I'll say a big deal of arguing about what we're, to get a name, but I don't know.
All right, anything else? Ms. Collins, you worried, concerned?
I'm just, I, I said, I'm sitting here, you know, thinking of the, the cost is the biggest thing that we're gonna be very cautious on.
Well, I think, I think these, these conversations are gonna, uh, 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 press the cost.
Well, I mean, and, and if you, if you, you being the commissioner and you're not happy with it.
You don't sign it, it's, and then you just, you're like, you are.
Just happy, happy.
That's the only thing, unless you wanna let your commissioner know or make it clear that there's a certain point that you're not going with.
Or? Okay, let's talk about the, the contract. We just might do a big bunch of crap for three ladies and we didn't give them a contract. But evidently this guy, he needs to announce something about a contract, so we gotta, that's gotta be solved too.
Is that something as a, and I, how can I say this, because we don't need to, uh, you know, need to deliberate in this.
It's hard to do any of this stuff without.
Deliberate, without breaking the state of your mind, yeah.
And you've got to be cautious because we got one that wants a contract, one that wants the sun paid for, for less of a job. We've got to be very cautious there.
I just, I, I mean, I think, I'm not deliberating, but I. I just, I, I mean, I think, I'm not deliberating, but I can give an opinion, an opinion, I, um, the financial officer would be, wouldn't need a contract, that would be under the administrator, right? So they would be protected because.
It would be better.
They have to, you know, like any person in my office, except for my clerk, I have to have, I would have to go through a period of process to eliminate them, so that they wouldn't, you know, there's a reason why they would be eliminated, so they're more protected. However, a person, um, like the administrator currently works at the will of, of the commission, and that works in a few places, but there's, there are very few places that it works, our county engineer is on contract. I honestly feel like you're asking, and, and I, you know, you're asking someone, uh, if I was in that position, if I was in that position, and I'm sorry, Lisa, but I mean, if I was in that position, then I would want to know that, hey, I got a little bit of a guarantee, you know, there are, there are, you know, at least a, a period of time in a certain, when, at that level, that you are protected.
And, and, and it's not different than it, I, I think what gets a lot of people is some of the contracts that you have read before. I think, I think this, I think the contract, if you believe the engineer's contract, where there's, the, the thing about a contract is, is don't lock yourself in, where you're locked in, you owe this, you owe the whole contract, and we already went through that, where you're locking in, so there, you know, you, there is a time period, if you can't get along with a person, then, you know, you can separate ways.
It's like, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm for or against contract, I'm just saying, what we've done in the past, we're, we're fixing to change, and we're fixing to change something we did not offer a woman, that would fix, particularly fix the offer a man, and the lawyers are already aligned that that's something we didn't think about. I mean, I don't know if that's an issue or not.
I don't know if it is, because each of those, each of those votes, it works both ways, each of those people made a decision, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
Take the job.
Maybe they're a career.
Or leave, or, or leave the job.
We just need to understand everything we're doing.
Yeah, to leave the job, or whatever.
Well, I think, I think too, when you look at, look at stuff like, you know, at the end of the day, the job was posted for anybody. Did, did you tell that man that he needed to ask for a contract? Did you?
No, but he asked.
Well, okay, but you didn't tell him, did you?
No.
Well, other than how, how's that, how's that, if I'm buying a car from you, and I'm, when you set tires on it, well, I can hear the cause the person that was there the week before, come in, whether whoever it is, I just, that's the reason why I don't speak them as an individual, didn't ask for a new set of tires, well, why am I liable? Because the man or the person asked for a new set of tires, but, but, but in the same process of that, we've moved from that.
I'm just telling you, I'm not an attorney.
Yeah.
But I haven't been involved in enough cases to know that there's probably somebody out there who wouldn't jump in that.
But, but I'll either, I, I just don't think we can let that cripple us into making.
I think everything we do here, the most things brought up are gonna get sued, and, 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 and when we were elected, I think the one that was here when I first come here, we got a lot, we get pushed for a lawsuit every day.
And.
And, and, but us sitting on this side of the table is not the one that's doing anything other than taking what, at the end of the day, you say, you say, well, we're not offering one. But at the end of the day, when the man asks for it, he says he's not taking the job, because his job is secure where he is now, and it's a good job. It's not gonna come here wondering, you know, work at his discretion, now, other people might take that chance, because it's a better paying job, and it's a better job, but, uh, you know.
See, I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm just saying, this is all the stuff that's, that's in people's mind, and, and if you don't talk about that in this meeting, then you're gonna be accused of covering something up.
What about asking, uh, making a resolution, asking the county attorney?
To make it get good.
I mean, it's, to make a, to make a contract, go ahead and.
I mean, it's legal to offer a contract, it's legal to offer a contract tonight, but I'm just saying, everybody needs to think about what else went on around here in the last five or six years.
Yeah.
You know?
But it, I, I would, I, I just wanted to make a resolution to task the, the, uh, the attorney, I need him to go ahead and make a contract. I mean, I'm gonna put that on.
Well, let's look at it this way, Mark, didn't you apply for that job? Would you offer a contract?
No, but I didn't have any, any follow-up interview.
But, but were you, I mean, that's what I'm saying, when people come to the door, it's no different than everybody's gonna sue us, because you wanna give the dump hook rather or rage, but every time you bring that up in here, I don't see it, I, to me, I don't see it, because I don't look at it that way, where I've tried to train myself as a person, or this person, or that person, I try my best to not even get in that, because if you look at our job applications, it, 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 it don't, all it says is, is based on your ability. But if I come to this job, and I apply for a job that, I say, God, you know, I sort of like the money, I, I mean, it's gonna be pretty good money, well, I might take that job, you know, but at the end of the day, at, at, at the front end of it, that person didn't say, well, I offer a job, it ain't like we're coming in here saying each time. What we're saying is, is give us your proposal.
Well, when you and Ryan go talk to him, and he throws out this daughter figure, again, if he says whether or not he wants a contract, I mean, that's the time to actually discuss.
Yeah.
But, I'm just saying, it's something we need to think about.
I think, I think, yeah, and I, and I think, I think Brian's right, well, I, you know, I said, I'm gonna talk to the attorney tomorrow, but what, and I go over that with him. All I'm saying is, is it, it, it may or may not be what we say, or what anybody says, it's like buying the tires. If the man says, I'm not giving up my talent without some kind of this, now, it might be this, it might be that it just makes me a classified employee. You know, that's, that's, that's what, if you think about all those things, it was resolved before, was nothing more than we offered a contract. When I left that office in there, I said, when I get back, and I, and, and, and the only thing that was said in that conversation with me, I want a five-year contract, not a five-year contract, four-year contract, and I think one of the, you know, because the attorney says you shouldn't be ever going no more than four years, the time of a commissioner, and I walked at the door, I said, you fill out your contract, you want it just like the county engineer is? I said, I come back, I'll present it, I was gone for about a week, and I guess all the suit kept getting sued, and, and they, they got an email, I'm just gonna leave. But, but the contract was offered, I offered it, and, and now, only just because I offered it, doesn't mean you get it, because it's no different than what somebody asked. It's just gotta come before us, and if the guy says, well, this is my deal, or not deal, so, I mean, all I'm saying is, it, it, but when you get there, you say, well, say he says he wants a contract, or this person, this employee wants, this new employee's looking at, he's wanting a contract, well, he wants a contract, and Terry don't want a contract, or anybody at this table don't want a contract, you say, no, and then move on from there, but as an attorney, I'd say, don't even offer, do it.
Well, you could, I'll, I'll be asking for a two-year contract, three-year contract, four-year contract.
I would do our standard contract, same one I got with.
Just a year from one year.
You want?
What is it, standard?
It would be a standard contract.
I'm sorry, what?
It would, uh, I would say it'd be a standard contract, like, uh, Lee's guy, with a buyout of, I think, what's Lee's buyout, three months, something like that?
Is there advantage to offer, to the county, to offer somebody a contract?
The only thing it does is, is like, 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 for instance, like for you, or like for a unclassified employee, the commission could come in and say, like with Tim, she was an unclassified employee, but we agreed us on separation, didn't have to, we could've, I mean, I should be using her now. But anyway, if somebody, if you were to ask, you know, you've been here three years, the commission might look at it, you know, if you can't get along with the commission, or, or we won't, but it's not, nothing like that with us, but I'm just saying, but with a, with a contract that spales out, and a contract, you get, is it thirty days? Thirty days, uh, if you can't get along with the commission, if Lee can't get along with the commission, we can't get along with him, we can't say, I, I, it spales out our separation term. So if Lee come to us and says, hey, I've got a better offer down the road, then you look at what's a separation is, you know, at the end of the day, that's, 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 that's what the way.
I understand the benefit to the, to the employee that we're talking about, but I was just trying to understand the benefit to the commission, I have a contract with that employee.
I, I don't see it, I mean, but if, if they, if they, they.
Of course he doesn't take the position without a contract.
Well, well, if someone decides to leave tonight, we're hurt. Yes, I'm gonna contract this.
His contract and then his salary.
Okay, well, I was drawing my name to do the, you go with Brian's, because I'm already, I'm already tonight.
I'm just asking.
I think he's leaving like he did.
I'm just asking.
Or, or.
I'm just asking, what's he on the salary now, you, you know, we're talking about contracts, we're talking about.
We don't know what the salary's gonna be, we don't know what the salary's gonna be until you negotiate with the person. Sure, this number's way up here, but what you gotta do is just go in and say, you gotta, you gotta be willing to say, this, well, this is where we're at, where we're at, but, but then when you get the number, because the person's gonna have the number, then you come back and you put the number in there, if we don't agree on it, if this, if this a crazy number, we're not gonna agree. Nobody's gonna agree.
He could task the county attorney to do that.
Yeah.
It might be the number's one thing with a contract, and one thing without a contract, that's just.
Well, the only thing it is, that, that, the person brought up that, and so if that's, if that's what he wants, then ask him what he wants, and you might, you know, I'm not gonna go there and say, let me give you a contract, why don't we just say, well, we're really, you know, can we not bid with it?
But you, you can go to the attorney and have a contract all the way.
Now, first I'm gonna see if I have to have it.
And then, then, like I say, the other thing is, you've got to negotiate these two salaries, you can't have the, the administrator and the finance officer acting aside for it.
Well, the thing about it is, you got to, you got to sit down with them, and, and sit down and say, hey, this is where we're at, what do you think? And then, once, once you pull them two numbers together, whatever those numbers are, then we come back and we'll say, we, we're gonna table it till next week, because everybody can't agree on it, so we're gonna table it to next week, or the following week, on just that item, we've done it a thousand times, since I've been in office since last, and then if we don't agree on the, the following week, you don't hire anybody, and guess what, we're staying the same way we are today. To me, it's not that complicated, you just do it and get it off, because we spend more time talking.
Your overall budget?
Yeah, the overall budget for these two positions.
Well, you got one position that's already here, and you was asking for a sixty-three thousand dollar position, so you gotta look at those numbers. Uh, that's one of the reasons, one of the questions about Gasky, I brought it up with Walter Hatter, with two, I think we're gonna have two sound financial officers that will work, I'm, I'm just saying these things, but, uh, I'm thinking that Gasky's gonna be coming in half.
I, I'm just looking at.
Because I think you're gonna lose the one that's been doing it, because I think she's, I think that person, that individual's gonna be your administrator.
I'm just looking at, you, you're adding to our budget, and there's gonna be more money added there, and that's what you're just describing.
Well, I, I just, I wanna, I know I'm leaving a tail on your saying, but this administrative area is, is just as important as our community. I just wanna say that.
Well, the book is a good shot.
What you gotta look at, you gotta look at.
It's so important, you gotta, and y'all, we're all held accountable, if, you know, I know we're all bonded, but we're all held accountable. Well, you can make sure that this is all, we got pros in here, these are pros, these people.
And, and if you got pros in here, you know, one dragging the wheelbarrow all, all the time, and, and don't have a lot, so I, I look at the quality of a lot of people, when you've got two people, when somebody needs to take off, needs to go do things, and, uh, can't even, can't even have a full weekend, from my understanding, the conversation is I had, that's ready not to bring somebody in that was capable of doing it.
And I don't wanna go back in the past, but the fact is, this was created, and we need to straighten it up, that's what we've already agreed. They should already, we should already had a financial person in place, but we did not, you know, that's not our fault, we gotta move forward. But now, Lisa, Lisa and I talked, and she realizes it was a mistake, mate, at that time, and that person should've been hired, so, I, I mean.
Um, I don't wish we've had any real qualified people as far as having another financial person in this office that we, we trained in governmental accounting. That applicant was the first one that I've actually seen that actually has governmental accounting experience. Now, I wish that there was some more, um, experience with creating that some financials, because that's not done in their offices, or they hired out as well. Um, but I would say that if you've got two people that are both, now have both got governmental accounting experience, working together, it's certainly a lot more possible that you could do it yourself in-house, when you've got two people working on it, obviously, you've got two heads working together on something, and gathering information, and working on those things together, but I think that, you know, going through all this is heading in the right direction, it's just a matter of how you get there.
Yeah.
The direction is, is the right direction to go in, now, when you did contract, when you came out, none of my business, not my problem.
To me, to me, I.
I look for things to help, however I can.
That's what I'm looking for, and, and, but at the end of the day, if you look at the numbers, it might, we'll get there, it might be a thirty-five minute conversation. I mean, it might not even be that long a conversation, because I'm gonna say.
You have to think about what you're gonna do if they say, well, this is what I want, take it or leave it, you have to decide what, what the point is, when you take it or walk away.
I mean, the budget's gonna work with you, right? It's just a question of how much it goes up.
But I think we got, I think we need to get, I think we need to get it stabilized, for one person that's holding the wheelbarrow the way it sounds, and, uh, we have more people with more than just one hand on the wheel, that way, and, and, you know, when we tried to set that up to start with, it didn't work out for us.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, we had.
But that's what we're gonna, we're gonna.
We had a finance person.
We're trying to make more.
The finance person was not hard.
Well, there wasn't one that was qualified, that really had an accounting.
That, you, you didn't, what, you did not have anyone that applied for that job, that did not have financial, a two-year financial.
An associate's degree in accounting, not an associate's degree in management, or, or anything like that, need to be something with accounting, or someone that already had some experience with our system here, and, I would do qualifications, and, I mean, we did grading, scoring, just what you all do, and our, what we thought was the best case in that situation.
But why did you not, and I guess this is in the past, but why would you not went further to put your, or was the applications for that, was it basically what we just did?
I think it was actually posted on Indeed, if I'm not mistaken, because if I recall correctly, we had a lot of applicants that did not qualify.
Let's use, you need to keep, keep the ball rolling.
Yes, it's my ball, boys.
Let's go, let's go.